The TC Freeze, located in Monizuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloin. Famous homemade pony sauce. And don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten-thirty to nine-thirty. To place an order, call 765-245-2887. We appreciate your business.
We'll go ahead and get the meeting. It is six-thirty, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting started.
I'll have your claims?
No claims.
Oh, wait a minute, I have claims. I don't have a thing.
Okay.
It's too early in the month to get the balance done yet. Had the wrong thing.
Do you rent this back here, don't you?
Yeah, we rent this out.
Do you keep this all year?
Yeah, this is the town's, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, ladies exercising here Monday through Thursdays.
I've seen that sign.
Um, the guys come for coffee a lot of time in the mornings on Monday through Friday, depending on who's around. At like six o'clock in the morning, five o'clock, I don't know, whatever time it was.
I've lived there almost a year. I lived, yeah, one-fifty.
Yeah, you're down there in the...
The Blue River Smithville.
What we call the Keller House. Go back.
Where they live at?
Uh, where Mark Smith lived.
Oh, yeah.
Is where he lives. So, so yeah.
Next couple of years. I've been real happy since I've been here.
Oh.
My basement flooded here. You know when we had that sump, about four inches just going...
I think Mark always, he always had a sump pump going in there.
Oh, so do I.
So, because he always had a line out there.
It came clear up the hill on my knees.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I just told over here, I put these boots, my high boots on, and uh...
Hello?
I wore bluster on my big toe and just now getting the pointers like this.
Oh.
Hey, good afternoon.
How's it going?
Not been good first year.
Oh. Yeah, I say, I think Mark kept that out there all the time because I remember seeing a pipe out there that he'd run out to the, into the road or something.
He had the sump pump wired backwards too.
Oh, I understand.
That's why it floods still. So Buddy and I, I was down in the basement, he was up there, he brought the switch up to me and turned it around and uh, it works just fine now. I noticed the floor is still wet, but it doesn't flood.
We are moving next month's meeting back a week. So, do I have to put that in the paper or can I put it on the window?
Either in the paper.
In the paper, okay.
It'd be on the ninth, wouldn't it, we're talking about?
Fourteenth. Oh, I think I had the fourteenth.
First, it's supposed to be the second, and a week after, that's the ninth.
No, May.
I'm looking at May, right here.
May is, starts on the first.
Not for your purposes.
May starts the sixth.
First Tuesday and May is the seventh.
Oh, that's what I meant, oh yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, because he said, yeah. The fourteenth is when we're gonna put it to. Yeah, he's living a long month or something.
I was thinking a week from today.
Oh, okay, yeah. Alright, so I put the paper down.
So do you have to advertise that?
Yeah, he said I have to put the paper.
What'd that cost?
Uh, shouldn't, because it'll be a free thing, I think.
Yeah, I'd put it as like newsworthy or whatever.
Newsworthy, yeah.
There's ways around that.
Yeah, where they end up and they publish our current one out, because they need to change the date.
You gotta go ahead and hit the road, get on the ratings too.
So, okay, I had that on my list to ask you.
Okay, is there any other new business?
New business?
Yeah. No, that's what we started out last week. We can start out with old business, because I don't really... Old business, that was the bleachers, you said they came in?
No, the bleachers come in, we're just waiting for Brian to put them together.
Okay.
And that, I liked your picture, that way there's no questions asked, so...
I occasionally come up with something good.
So where do you want to put your set there?
They sent a picture, you wanna see it?
I wasn't privy to it.
Um, it's, so they wanted one on the, the south field, like up on the hill, like...
On the west side, like towards the concession stand side?
On their side.
And the other one would be on the smaller field, you got one bleachers here and just the other one here, so...
So, who?
Behind, it was behind the...
It's just the bottom, bottom field though, period.
No, the upper field would get one set too.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, there'd be two at the upper field, because there's already one there, and then we get one at the bottom field.
Oh, pass that down.
Is what kinda the consensus was.
What's the, the about, on the four?
Alright, so right over here behind this, what I call a home dugout.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Over, for the ballpark.
I'm not here prior, previous to that, right there.
Top program, they're gonna be having some tournaments, we decided we'd go ahead and get...
And I did send uh, something similar to that to RMC, as far as where we're asking for the lights to be placed.
Ah, okay.
Um, the lighting company suggested by the home dug, by the dugouts on each side, and then two in the middle of the outfield, like a third of the way each way, is what they suggested, because it gets the optimum lighting coverage then. So that's what I sent to RMC. So there'd be four total lights, two of them would face towards home plate, two of them would face toward the outfield, basically.
That'd be right.
That's all I had for old business.
Did we get the ble, the one set of bleachers touched up? Brian, get that done yet? You heard?
He did that last year, he's in the dugouts.
Okay, because you, it was the dugouts.
Yeah, I've already paid, yeah, that's done, yeah, I thought...
They brought boards and replacements and paintage, right?
Yeah, he's paid and everything, yeah.
I haven't been by there, so I haven't seen it, but...
Um, I don't, I think he sent me a picture.
We practice tomorrow, so I'll see him.
Oh.
I'll see him tomorrow.
Um, I was gonna wait till we get through this week, and then turn the water on.
Okay.
Getting cold, just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, we don't have games for another couple of weeks.
And then I'd have, I'll get hold of Deb and have her come in and clean, and then I'll get the dumpster brought in.
Okay, yeah, because the first games are like the seventeenth maybe? Something like that, seventeenth.
Okay, but I just probably let you know, because with, I was gonna do it this week with Jason, I'll have to just talk, call for it to get cold next couple of days, I don't wanna take any chances.
Tuesday, the sixteenth.
So...
The pool setting will happen in the next month, probably from RMC, but I don't have a date yet, so...
Okay.
I just sent him that email today, when I was doing the thing for you guys with the bleachers.
Okay, that's all I have for old business. You think of anything else?
Well, last we got to talk about Kevin wanting to look around, stuff, you know, talking about a couple of hosters. Right up here at the post office, you cannot walk down that side.
Oh yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty busy.
This much work.
I had to walk down the middle of the street just to get it down the slide.
Part of this is the state's problem, because the drains need that. The air problem is, there's rock out there this high, it's making a lake.
So we need to end up and see if we can get that, the tractor in to kinda level that out, and then shift the state?
I don't know if you could do that, with that, you know?
Here's the deal, I think they put that rock up there initially, like back with the concrete, the old restroom set, so it'd get to that dumpster. All that rocks came out now, it just traps, you're not the first one to mention Darlene Gill, just saw me the other day about it, I was up there. But you, you can't, you gotta go out in the street to walk out.
And even this, I just noticed this drain, I hear it's blocked.
It's full right here at the corner.
Now, I know we had a lot of rain, we had three to four inches of rain last night.
Isn't that, something a bit different on that?
But I don't know about thi, I haven't noticed the water standing in this one. That one up there always does, but this one right here, yeah, that's why I was surprised.
Yeah, we, we contacted, they got a back truck, she has a drain right there in front of the post office. A drain just east of the post office. Once it's cleaned out, that works good. Problem is, just to the west of that dry, the alley right there as well, that's where all the rain's at. It traps water bad, big time, I mean, it's, I'm, we're talking big, big amount of water, it's not...
Right, right there in front of the old garage, the future garage.
They don't swim in right now.
Right.
Yeah, we need to do something about it.
Grab the address and get Kevin and get that figured out.
Yeah, so we can get with that, because I don't know who at the state, who usually gets a hold of it.
It Betty Junior's his name.
Uh, no, he's not over there anymore, he's at the big house. It's, dude down here at the corner, is the one that runs it.
Hold on a second, it's Kathy Crowder's, Sean um...
Obasawster, whatever he's named. Obah, whatever.
Something, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he runs it now. I think that's who Kevin calls, but he's the one that comes over or sends somebody over. So, but that's not gonna solve that problem though, is, you're gonna have to get the, I mean, you're gonna have to get all that rock out of there, and there, there's a big section that there's no water.
It's on the town sidewalk.
Yeah, it's on the town sidewalk.
We should have a sidewalk thing. Years, for years, that was just flat as a bean, you didn't have a problem. We need to get rid of them or, we need to pour us a new sidewalk, we need to do something there. It's a dangerous trip hazard, badly.
Right there.
Well, also people pulling up to get their mail, they just pull, pull their cars right up there on top of the sidewalk all the time.
So...
Which is not, you know, healthy for a sidewalk, I think.
But, on the flip of that, the property beside the post office doesn't belong to the post office.
Yeah, yeah, it's fusioned or whatever.
So, I mean, that's Kramer's property.
We're talking on the east side of the post office.
On the east side of the post office, it wasn't, so is on the...
On the west side of the post office.
It's Kramer's. So I mean, I know, I mean, yeah, it's not like, I mean, we are parking on their property to get our mail, if you park on that side, so the only place to pull is on the front.
Sidewalk in front of the post office. Yeah, they got, she told me they got one spot.
Yeah.
And that's right in front of the building.
Right, and then you take a chance if you're not careful, and get hit up.
I don't park there.
I don't either.
I park on the other side.
I don't either, I park for the other side if I'm taking packages.
I, I park on...
Yeah, that story may be short.
What do you have?
Lot of complaints here.
So...
Lot of complaints here.
We've gotta get something figured out, and I don't know, yeah, part of it's the state, but part of it is us.
Well, part of the state, part of the state, that's exactly right. Get state vacuuming out, clean that out.
And you gotta get that rock to keep filling it up.
We gotta get that rock, take it off, pour new concrete, do something, so it's just seamless flow through there.
Yeah.
And this come-on block up there in the winter, and it'd just be frozen, all water, it'd just, it'd just be solid ice.
So we're gonna get Kevin, he gets back and have him make a phone call and see what...
He said he'd be, I thought he was gonna be back later this week.
Uh, possibly today or tomorrow.
Yeah, it might be late, I don't know, with the weather coming in, I don't know if they'd postpone it, and he'll have to stay.
I have talked to him, I've talked to him a couple of times, so I didn't ask him, he's coming back, because I need to know what he uses.
Well, that's kind of...
I have another problem, wanna address the council too, which I noticed. I just live about six doors down, down...
You're down the corner.
With the old flag out there.
He lives in the next house, where Brian used to live at, this next house.
Oh, you're the, okay, I didn't know. Okay, you're the one came from Florida. Okay.
These idiots flying down through here, they come off that stop sign, and they're doing, I know, fifty, forty-five, fifty miles, and there's all kinds of kids.
Right down through here.
All right down through, on both sides of the streets, and I've seen, I can count how many times where the people cross the street, or I mean, the kid, you know, kicks the ball and goes across the street, well, it just going, it's gonna happen, it's not, it's just when, not, you know, if, it's when, you know, someone's gonna get killed.
Especially...
And they're flying down through there. I called, what he called the police.
Do you see what kind of the day they're kinda doing it a little more on?
Well, they were, what was that, around five? It was like that, in the afternoon, yeah.
Afternoon, late afternoon.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, these, there's some big trucks that come down through their big grain dump, big dump trucks, and they just fly down through there.
Yeah, then they got those grain trucks that come down through there at the same time.
So, we need to get our marshal, or get the county in there and then start, and do it on...
If you can get a license plate, that would be helpful, next time you see one.
I'm not even gonna call sheriff. I got, I got a ring on my front door.
Because then we could use the license plate to contact whoever.
I mean, ring with the bad guys, the guys speeding at no fun. There's this one that's got a little silver, beat-up Ford.
You can get a picture of the license plate, that would, then we can end up in, we have...
It flies down through there sixty miles an hour.
A license plate number or a picture of the license plate would be helpful.
I'll get my ring, I got a ring on my front door, ring the doorbell, so I'll start getting pictures.
Okay, because then that way we have who it is.
Before a kid gets killed. You know, they gotta slow down at that end of the world, because they don't make the turn.
That turn.
But as soon as they make that, they just, well, I just heard one hauling just a little while we were hitting, sitting there, you know, hauling, but, while we were just sitting here.
I mean, we got the sign up that says no trucks, but when it's farm trucks, you can't control that, because the grain trucks, I mean, that's just...
It's not in the forest, someone's gonna, if it's not in the forest, they're gonna do it, they don't care.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The deputy that came to us was, he wouldn't even listen to us, he listened to the guy that was good at the speed. So we basically left. You know, that was it, we weren't gonna get nothing out of him. You know, he was patting that speeder on the head more than less, and kicking us, you know, that we were the bad guys.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Really?
Five people, you know, had to watch these two cars, they wouldn't listen to us.
Us two and his.
Of course, I know, he has to see them with his eyes before they can do anything, but we need, we need us, we need, we need some law enforcement. I understand we do have a marshal.
We do, but it, we don't have a full-time marshal. Because we're a small town, we can't afford a full-time, so we just have a part-time one.
You pay him part-time then, so I think part-time, he should be out there with a radar gun.
I've never seen him.
He's here more in the evenings, because he works, he's a full-time, he works as a deputy in Montgomery County for days, so he's here usually in the evenings periodically.
What kind of, does he drive, does he have a vehicle for that job? Is it a white truck?
It'd be the white marshal.
It's right to right angle, so it's marshal, police partner.
But, I don't know if signs for kids, if that would end up in...
Same enforcement issue.
The same thing in there.
Small towns is just hard.
Can't, art, yeah.
And there's one?
I, you know, if we'd ended up in what the law would kind of like, if we had signs warning of kids, if we've got a lot of kids down there, but like Nick was just saying, it, it'd be the same thing as us having the sign for the trucks, it's hard to enforce it if you don't have somebody here full-time.
Yeah, you have to go through a process to install those though. Plus, you're not gonna wanna do that on your new pavement, if it just got redone.
What's that?
Speed bumps, but there's a process.
There's laws.
But then you're also tearing up your brand-new main street that just got paved also. And you don't wanna be driving with speed bumps as a normal... I mean, there's also, well, there's also the signs, the stop signs, or the signs that like gauge your speed, that show your speed.
Oh, they like to have on Howard Avenue.
But those are pretty pricey too.
And you don't pay attention to them.
Yeah, there's some, there's some that will transmit though, um, that will transmit what the speed is, so then we'd get an idea of what time of day they're coming through.
But...
Because if we could get a time of day...
That kinda helps, give you an idea of what...
Well, I'm retired, and I'm, I'm sitting there right, once it gets a little warmer, I'll sit on porch with the camera, and I got a ring doorbell too, so...
Because that, that stuff would be helpful information.
That way you ended up and you, basically you caught them, at least to address the kind of a warning, like, hey, we've got complaints, because then you got proof who they were.
I would talk to your marshal, because it would pay you for nothing, I'm being serious, I mean, you know, they're not firing.
So we'll get that addressed.
There'd be more money for your baseball team.
That's not, that's not where the baseball money comes from.
Well, whatever, what you're saying, if you're paying the fan, a marshal for that.
Yeah, it's a separate organization, the baseball stuff is.
Yeah.
What do they do with this building over here?
That's a question we don't totally know yet, it's own vice.
I guess, guess it used to be a real good restaurant there, or something out here.
Yeah, it used to be.
They were up there about a week or so ago.
Which building, the corner restaurant, or the...
Yeah, one of them worked last, the...
One of the restaurants.
Last fall, last summer.
Yeah, in the arch?
Yeah.
Got your sales side and the front window with a number on it.
Oh, and the other one, I didn't know they put one up, the, yeah, that one, yeah, I saw it at your sales sign there, on the other one, but...
It looks like, since they patched it up, it looks pretty decent outside.
Yeah.
Okay, new business, what do you have for new business, anything? Um, Brian submitted to me, because we talked about putting steel on the...
Concession stand, shelter house.
Um, I'm assuming you wanna leave it the red color that it is, I don't know why we wouldn't change the color.
The shelter house concession stand.
What about there?
We talked about last meeting, made a comment about just getting a pricing for getting to redo the outside of it, instead of trying to pay.
Well, we talked about that, I know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But Brian gave us a price.
We need, I mean, it's something we need to get going on, instead of waiting till next month, and, I mean, then that, your first of May, then you're having ball season almost over with. So, I don't know, it just kinda got dropped, because everybody got to talking about something else last time. I don't know what we got to talking about, but...
I don't know if you got a, I know you said you reached out to Brian, I don't know if you had the pricing the last time.
But I do.
Okay.
So, uh, that's what Brian submitted, so I don't know what...
Excuse me. So I was the crazy guy that came up from Florida. Who really knew that? Hey. South Florida too, it wasn't...
You came from Fort Myers, didn't you, because I talked to you, yeah. So what do you think of that, Dale?
And that's just, um, just a sliding on the building myself, there's nothing to do with, it can't be area out there with picnic tables.
Not that I understood that Kevin wanted anything done with that.
I figured if we were doing it, we'd be wrapping everything, because I thought we were gonna make it maintenance.
No, you're talking about, he's talking about the canopy, the...
Right.
We're not gonna do anything out there.
Well, with all these paintings, would be the, be the eaves kind of around the top. You got your ledge piece that goes like this?
All Kevin was talking about was concession stand.
So, so we're talking about this concession stand or?
Right, that's all he said.
He takes off the batten of the boards, and that's what will have to happen, gotta have a flat surface to do this with.
Now, we can wait till Kevin gets back and, um, and decide, and then see if he can get it done really fast. When's your tournament?
June third through the fourteenth.
So you're pushing...
June, now you have to, May the fourteenth.
Because you're not having a meeting till May fourteenth. Or I can get with Kevin when he gets back and talk to Kevin, we can go from there.
So when's Kevin gonna be back?
Here in the next few days.
He said he might be back like tonight.
I, when I talked to him last, I didn't ask him, weather-wise, I don't know.
They could always approve it pending Kevin's vote, if they...
On what he's, yeah, making sure that's exactly what you want.
He didn't have an objection.
I was making sure it's what, what he wants.
I was under the impression, because if you're doing a building, you just go ahead, because we talked about making it maintenance-free.
Yeah.
That we were doing, taking care. The main part is, is the concession stand, but then you've got...
And see, that's all I understood.
Around the top, kind of, for round stuff, yes.
You know, not necessarily solid, just basic stuff like that.
To get it kinda wrapped, and then that way there's no maintenance on it at all.
It might be a little bit uneven, but you know, I mean, on top of the outside of the structure there.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, because he never talked about that, he just talked about a concession stand, so I don't know. And so, essentially on the backside.
If we don't do this, we want replacement boards anyhow, period.
Right.
Because they're bad.
Right. And then you're after, I reckon, paint it.
And, does it look high?
Yeah, everything is high.
Right, yeah, especially now, it's gonna get worse.
Especially metal.
Everything is expensive.
Metal's high.
But down the road, over the time, it's not like...
This one, me and Mr. Nelson, we argue a lot, but we talk about that later, but...
Right.
I don't have broadwood, you guys don't have broadwood.
I was wanting to be confirmed with Kevin, we know exactly, but see what he's votes on, but know what is actually gonna be all done, make sure around, like I said, the faucets and stuff, which I can talk to Kevin too.
I have some stuff to go, but we're thinking when he gets back, so... And it might be that he may have to put another hundred dollars on there or something, or, I don't know.
I don't care, I just, I'm like Darla, if you're gonna put that metal on the outside of that building, we need to go, we're gonna have to fix it, what do you wanna call that, pavilion or whatever. Seems like to paint that out here. I mean, to me, it just makes common sense to do.
Yeah, like, different teams, different stories.
I'm just talking about the stuff.
And I guess I didn't ask him, and maybe he's...
And he could have already had that figured in there.
There's like, there's gonna be like...
Because I never thought about that, because...
Over the course of two weeks.
That was...
Okay, yes, it's real fun trying to figure it out. Not the time they would make it.
So we have a team...
And like I said, he could have already had it figured.
Ten-year-olds, twelve.
We don't know for sure, because it's not here, because it could be.
He's not broken down.
Yeah, it's all...
Can...
That's what I couldn't give my answer. We don't host it, we host it every four years, so this is our first year in a while to host it.
Can we get with Kevin? And if Brian needs to do a new quote, and then...
I would have them vote on a thing not to exceed a certain threshold, that they're comfortable with, on a bid on it.
And that's not very fair to her either, I want help on cost of...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's hard to...
Can he, can, if he finds out, can he do a phone call that they all agree?
Or they could just vote to let Kevin be the deciding person on that, I suppose.
That's what I was wanting, just to be the deciding, giving the authority to go ahead. We agree that we need to go ahead and proceed with, with this, but we need to end up and have Kevin.
And then let Kevin get with Brian, exactly what he wants, and Kevin's gonna decide yea or nay, what's...
Yeah, they can do that.
Okay.
As long as they're both okay with it.
Okay.
We need to make a motion, we need to make a motion, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, point you said there right there, pen me, Kevin's approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sometimes it's just not feasible to have a board meeting to decide a certain matter.
Yeah, I mean, I got other things going, but it's just verbal stuff that doesn't...
You know, it might be a, just a couple of dollars.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of what he'd do.
And then hackle Brian next time I see him.
Maybe call him his son next.
We're gonna tell him the Amish are much cheaper.
Do you have any other stuff, Kathy?
Can't make sure I didn't put anything I didn't want. Just then, we'll just, last thing, the date of ordinance from last month. But other than that, no, I don't have anything else. If nobody else...
Um, small claims case Kathy asked me about, we're working on it, she'll probably have something to sign in the next two.
And I, I'll send a letter out to the one you sent me the address on, and the final.
That's fairly recent, that address is.
Okay, I'll send it, return receipt.
I wanna expect a response out of that individual probably, I mean, he's got a long track record, so...
I'm gonna still sue him, if I don't get anything back.
He's got a pending criminal case, so I can set the small claims date on the same time thing.
Okay.
That's how I found him.
So do I, should I go ahead and send him something?
We're required to send him a letter and give him opportunity to pay.
Okay, I will, okay, okay, I'll get that done.
Send me a copy of the letter.
Okay. Okay.
You usually do that anyway, right?
I would say, okay.
But don't expect anything out of him.
I don't, yeah, I don't, so, okay.
But I do have a plan on how to claim, so.
Okay. So.
When they're pending criminal cases, they show up. When they're pending small claims cases, there are less clients show up.
So, okay.
Anything else?
Um, what else did we email about?
Oh, did you get with the people to sign the egress?
I thought Kevin was doing that.
Oh, I thought she was doing, I was going to say about them coming to your office with a notary.
I don't have an address to send it to them at, and so I thought we were left.
Put on you with him gun to around Lee again.
Well, and that's fine, I just, I need to know, like, a phone number and an address, or.
Okay.
It's done, all they got to do is sign.
I bet, okay.
But.
Because I was thinking that you.
I thought Kevin was doing that, so maybe.
Maybe you got the wires crossed, okay, because I was thinking you was going to.
So if I have a phone number or an address, either one, I can do it, that's not a problem.
Okay, because they did have to be signed with a notary, right?
And everybody that works for me is a notary, so.
Okay, that would probably be the best, yeah.
If they don't want to come to Park County, I can have somebody take a road trip and get lunch in terror.
Oh, I'm sure they'll be thrilled with that.
We had to do that the other day, somebody was in jail in Bydell County, and we need to get it signed in front of the notary, so one of them going to go down there.
Okay. Other than that, I think that's all you were working on, wasn't it?
Yeah, um, I need to talk to Brady about the Amish house over there.
Oh.
But he's not here, so I'll call him.
Talking about the one back over here.
Kings or whatever, that, I don't know.
The one on the same street door.
Yeah, right.
Talking about this odd color house in the back over here.
I haven't been over, I, I just know the name of the people, so.
Yeah, there's a lot next to it.
Yeah, and they used to have animals living in a barn or something in there, or something, I don't know.
I guess it's something that they tried to do with hunters or something.
Yeah.
No, you're one street over too far.
Pardon?
You're one street over too far.
Well, actually, you can look out my back door and see it.
Oh, yeah, he's probably, he probably can't see it.
I got the, they told me I had the biggest lot in town, and I cut it, yeah, I know.
But yeah, part of that, they don't own all of that lot, they just own part of it.
Yeah, but I'll give it to him, I'll be done, once done with that.
And is this one over here done?
Yeah.
Okay.
So talking about Brady, and talking about, you know, complaints about residents, and I know we got the Franklin property down, what about the house just east of Old Park Gas right there?
That's been on my list.
That thing's getting worse by the minute.
That's been on my list that I've talked to Kevin about.
I did it twice, I couldn't handle it well, twice today, around the cemetery, talking about church, from the street to.
Has anybody been by the Franklin place, is it still getting better than with?
That thing gets pretty good, and all of a sudden they start accumulating a little bit more, I don't understand.
I'll do my meter readings Thursday, and that's when I do an actual, that I kind of observe, and.
Last I heard, they were making improvement.
They were, and they, they have.
It looked really a lot better, but then it kind of went along with all this other stuff, I don't, I don't understand.
Oh, speaking of which, do you know anything about the status?
They didn't hire me to transfer ownership or anything, so I don't know.
No, on the theft?
No, I don't, I can inquire, though, I know it got sent, I know they were going to file, but I don't know if they actually did.
I haven't heard anything either, so I just hadn't seen it.
Are they doing anything with this house, you said?
If I can think of.
This one is owned by somebody in Indianapolis.
The one that's fallen apart?
Brady told me they were charging.
How long have they had it?
A couple, three years, sometimes gets by one from you, they put a roof on it, and.
They did?
Yep.
There's a metal roof on it.
Is there any good bones in it, it looks like it's about ready.
The house got good bones, actually, the house got good bones.
We're talking about this White House right here.
I'm talking about right here, next door.
Right, well.
I'm talking about the White House.
Yeah, right, yeah, on over, the house house.
Jumping in the apartment.
Yeah, yeah, on the other side of the apartment, yeah.
I guess they would probably sell it if somebody wanted to buy it.
Yeah, I was going to say, the back porch is all fallen down, that back room is fallen down.
I had someone inquire the other day with me about it.
I think it's spelled this way.
Oh, there are two empty houses right there.
Sebo.
Is there two right there?
Well, there's two real close to you.
See, I B O L D.
No, what?
That's how I pronounce it, Sebo.
Is that how you spell it, S E I?
No, S E Y.
Okay.
I'm going to say, oh, I, I thought I wanted to pronounce it, he wants to, F C Y B O L D, S E Y, I'm sorry.
That one right over here behind me, the, the people that.
Yeah, they charged it.
And personally, directly with that house in the same, you know, spot.
He's down.
They've been taking care of the lot, the one lot, kept it rest, and they took all the wood out of it, and, you know, that was laying in and around there, and. They, you know, what was four or five feet high last year, somebody come along, cut, and these guys have been keeping it up, so.
And that's behind you then, kind of, okay, I mean, because you own all, behind you basically, like next on the south side or north side?
You mean, you're talking across the road from you, that's on, that we're talking, the house we're talking about that's falling down?
That's behind me.
The one right behind you?
Yeah, the little orange color, I guess it is.
Oh, no, she, he must be talking.
I mean, I was talking about this one here too, the roof's fallen down.
But there's no, there's no abandoned house.
There is over here.
That's right behind you.
Almost right behind me, it's, it's one lot over. It's not in my property line, but it's, it's across the road, one mile over, I think you guys said it was owned by the Amish.
Across the, that's what I said, across the road, that, yeah, yeah, there was a, there was a rock, gravel lot beside.
He's going to talk about the yellow-orange house.
I was talking about the.
No, they're beside the house, yes, that, the gravel lot is owned by somebody else, yes, and then there's a house. Yeah, yeah, he went and sprayed weeds last year, yeah, it fell through on what he was going to do there, I think, but yeah.
Does anybody know how much they want for that lot?
I don't know that it's for sale.
They don't want to sell it.
Nothing's for sale.
They don't want to sell it?
No, nothing's for sale.
Amish owns it.
Not a lot, they own the house.
Patton owns a lot, with the gravel.
Rick owns part of that lot, he doesn't own it all.
Oh, he don't own it all?
That goes over on what you think it does.
Yeah, I mean, but they, yeah, the Amish own the house part, and Rick owns the gravel lot, that he put the gravel on, yeah.
And the case is filed against the Amish that own that.
Right, right, so.
I just wanted to see what he had to say about what he wants done there.
Yeah, but you said it had been charged?
That, the other case, no, it's not been filed.
Oh.
It's been handed over, is what he told me before our last meeting.
Yeah, that's what I understood too.
There's nothing in the court system on it, so, but I'm going to see the prosecutor in honor, so I guess ask him.
Okay.
Okay.
And just do this, sign the board meeting minutes from last month, other than that.
You did a good job on my first, it's just a chuck and run away.
There you go, that's what you want, isn't it?
Yep. I appreciate it, I thanked you before, but I'll thank you again, you were a godsend. My parents work, so I just think can't keep the heat in the house, I don't think there's any insulation in it.
Or it's settled and it needs some new in it?
Pardon?
Or it's settled, if it's a blown-in, it's kind of maybe settled and.
Yeah, because, I mean, I got to keep it running, I mean, I can't let it sit, or I'll freeze, you know, I mean, I've got a little, those little coil furnaces, or heaters in the front room that goes all the time. I've got another one, I, I don't use it because the electricity's so bad in the house, and when I turn it on, it blows the fuse.
Wow.
Because you just have to go in and see it, see how it's wired, I mean, I've got upside-down fuse, and switches, and everything else, and I know he said he remodeled it, but I wouldn't have him remodel my house. And that's what you get for hiring one of the dyslexic electricians, I guess.
Okay, and then our meeting for next month will be pushed back a week, and it will be May the fourteenth.
Go ahead and have on the twentieth, that way you guys do a birthday party for me.
No, we don't care when you were born.
Hey, this is a big one.
How old are you, you're turning seventy, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys have anything else?
Huh?
So you guys, you good, okay.
So I think those minutes right there, I just saw in North Hall, I don't comment on them. Karen Stutler.
Karen Stutler ended up, and the twenty-twenty-four funds for the forever fund, she rolled it out, just went ahead, because we have to let her know by January, before January.
Of last year, I mean, this previous January.
This previous January, because she didn't know we had anything in sight for projects, she was going to see if there was any way to do anything with any kind of money, but she, I followed back up with her again today, because she was still checking, but she didn't think so. Because she said we need to plan ahead before January to decide what we want, so that way she doesn't just roll over the money and put it back into the fund.
So, it's an annual draw then, it sounds like.
Yes, the annual draw just stayed in the pot, and she just had to go ahead and just put it back in.
Having said that, can we apply that for January next year, what we're spending?
That's what we need to do, um.
She probably won't reimburse it now.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm asking.
She probably won't.
She probably won't, no.
That's not how they tend to operate, usually it's advanced approval.
It's got to be advanced approval, and they probably have to have a meeting, whoever's on that committee, to approve it, to write the check.
Yeah, that would, that would, if they operate like the foundation itself does, then.
That's what, yes.
So what I would do is I'd come up with a project in advance of next year, which will be pretty much on that and taken care of next year with the park. Yeah, so, I, I mean, you could ask her, but I, I bet that's what she's going to tell you.
Well, and that's kind of what she already kind of said in the, in my text she sent, she said, I'll just look, but I doubt it, because if there's any funding there.
Annual thing though, because a lot of those forever funds are a rolling thing where you can do it throughout the year, so.
She just does it annual, I guess, the way it sounds.
Yeah.